Buenas tardes. Quisiera pedir orden de esta reunión regular del Consejo de Educación de Hartford el 24 de febrero de 2014. ¿Puedo hacer una llamada de rola, por favor? ¿Puedo hacer una llamada de rola, por favor? ¿Aquí? Muchas gracias. Buenas noches. Como jefe del Consejo de Educación de Hartford, les pediré que ordenen la reunión regular del Consejo de Educación de 2014. Deseo extendir un abrazo a todos los presentes y a nuestros espectadores de televisión. El superintendente y yo estamos contentos de que se hayan unido a nosotros mientras celebramos logros, revisamos información y toman decisiones políticas relacionadas con la eficaz operación de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión regular y todos los temas que se discutirán o votarán esta noche han sido publicados como requeridos por la ley. Como Consejo de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer objetivos, escuchar los informes del superintendente, aprobar presupuestos, contratos y apoyos de personal y tomar decisiones políticas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones de gestión o resolver problemas de individuos. La gestión es la responsabilidad del superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales del Consejo son abiertas al público. Son el momento en que el Consejo realiza su trabajo de gobernar el sistema escolar en un área pública. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios del público serán confinados al tiempo designado para que el público aborde el Consejo. El decoro y la gratitud son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas efectivas. Por favor, silencien sus teléfonos o dispositivos de comunicación y eviten hablar mientras otros están hablando. Debido a que es legalmente obligatorio que los procedimientos sean precisamente grabados, podría tener que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido comienza a interferir con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Estoy contento de que hayan tomado el tiempo esta noche para unirse a nosotros. Somos muy orgullosos del sistema escolar y gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Vamos a comenzar la sesión de la reunión del Consejo sobre comentarios. La primera persona es Hyacinth Yeni.
Antes de comenzar, solo quiero agradecer a Leonard F., como principal de la Academia de Periodismo y Medios, al personal de JMA y a los estudiantes aquí que nos están recibiendo en el hermoso edificio escolar. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos.
Buenas noches.
Espero que estén todos bien esta noche. Bueno, primero debo decir que quiero agradecerles a todos por servir al Consejo escolar, al Consejo de Educación de Hartford. Sé que no es un trabajo fácil de hacer. Es un trabajo sin sentido. Pero usted sabe qué? Nosotros agradecemos y los padres agradecemos por hacer lo que hacen. Así que, de nuevo, muchas gracias a todos aquellos que sirven. Quiero entrar en algunas cosas aquí, lo que es realmente tan importante para los niños de Hartford y los padres de Hartford. Y se trata de "enseñar para Estados Unidos" o, ya saben, "enseñar para Estados Unidos". Mi hija fue a Central durante unos años para convertirse en profesora y fue certificada por el estado. Y cuando miro lo que está pasando, estoy mirando un tema de agenda aquí, cuánto dinero estamos planeando gastar para reclutar a profesores para traerse a enseñar para Estados Unidos a nuestra ciudad. Y, de nuevo, lo veo como que Hartford siempre es el guinea pig para todo lo que va de "hoy" o "ayer", o lo que sea. Y me molesta porque siento que no estamos animando a la gente joven a ir a la escuela para el colegio más allá. Solo vayan al colegio, pueden salir y pueden enseñar cualquier cosa. Y te preguntas por qué las cosas no van en la dirección que se supone que van. No estoy diciendo que no sean todas buenas personas jóvenes que quieren hacer algo bueno para la comunidad, pero el punto es que no hay estabilidad ahí. Estos niños vienen y van en dos años, tal vez un par de ellos pueden quedarse porque les gusta. Pero todavía necesitan ir a la escuela para enseñar para que puedan obtener una certificación. Así que una de las cosas que, ya saben, que miro, ya saben, todo es político de nuevo. Quién gana dinero de qué y quién gana dinero. Y si lo miras en general, esto no se trata de nuestros hijos. Esto realmente no se trata de nuestros hijos. Se trata de algo más. Y así realmente me molesta. Así que como padre que ha estado involucrado en lo que está pasando en el sistema durante cuántos años, puedo ver el mal, el bueno y el malo que viene a nuestra ciudad y algunos de ellos no son buenos. Aquí es de nuevo, queremos, ya saben, cuando miro este documento aquí, donde estamos gastando mucho dinero y realmente reclutando, y aquí es que la Escuela Pública de Hartford o mayormente la escuela secundaria no puede permitir un maestro de música o un artista. Ahora, si pudiéramos construir un buen programa musical y artístico, no tendríamos que preocuparnos por construir un 33 millones de dólares, un edificio en esta ciudad, otro edificio que no necesitamos, ¿de acuerdo? Y nuestros hijos, la mayoría de ellos no tienen eso, ¿de acuerdo? Porque tienen que averiguar si pueden permitir un maestro para los artes o si pueden permitir un maestro para la música. Eso debería ser dado. Teníamos un gran programa hace unos años. Así que todo esto ya está. Así que, ya saben, necesitamos ver qué ayudó a desarrollar a un niño y permitir que un niño se desarrolle y se vuelva realmente bueno. Así que necesitamos ver estas cosas simples que pueden hacer a los niños mucho mejor que lo que son estos días. Así que no, ya saben, veamos seriosamente lo que estamos haciendo aquí y estos contratos o a quién estamos apoyando en conseguir lo que es de lo que... Estoy muy serio sobre eso. Seriosamente, pongamos algo de dinero en la escuela de nuestros hijos, en el aula, ¿de acuerdo? Tenemos una escuela que es sucia, sucia, que necesita limpiarse. No tenemos suficiente custodia. Y de nuevo, es el dinero que obtienen los niños que tienen que gastar, ¿de acuerdo? El punto es que necesitamos un poco más de tiempo. Y obtener más del estado no nos ayudará porque no estamos poniendo el dinero donde debe irse, ¿de acuerdo? Así que asegurémonos de que va a nuestro aula, luego podemos hablar de educar a todo el niño. Gracias.
Destiny Delaina Orman y Kayla. Solo quiero recordarles que van a dividirse en tres minutos, ¿de acuerdo?
Hola, mi nombre es Delaina Spencer y esto es Destiny O'Royce. Estamos aquí a cargo de nuestros maestros de TA en Great Path Academy. Los maestros de TA han influido en nuestro aprendizaje porque por ser nuestros maestros nos han animado a ser lo mejor que podemos y nos han impulsado hacia adelante. Han, quiero decir, nos han ayudado a darse cuenta de que nuestro futuro es importante y independientemente de dónde estemos en la vida, podemos hacer más con ello a través de nuestra educación. Nos muestran que nuestra educación refleja lo que podemos hacer y ser en el futuro.
Nuestros maestros pueden relacionarse con los estudiantes y trabajar con nosotros de formas de sacar nuestra atención para que podamos activamente enfocarnos. Sintimos que los maestros de TFA nos muestran el lado cariño de ellos, lo que los estudiantes necesitan para sentir que su educación importa. En mi experiencia personal, inglés nunca fue mi punto fuerte. Siento que mi maestra, la señora Robinson, realmente me impulsó a intentar más y obtener más comprensión en inglés. Y siempre que necesité ayuda adicional, mi tarea de geometría, el Sr. Mitchell siempre estaba ahí para ofrecerme ayuda en su tiempo libre. También para mi maestra española, siempre que el trabajo parecía difícil, ella siempre encontraba una forma de hacer la lección más divertida. Tengo tendencia a escapar de los problemas cuando son difíciles, pero todos mis maestros nunca se renunciaron a mí y me mostraron mi propio potencial para nunca renunciar a mí mismo. Realmente aprecio tenerlos como mis maestros.
Nunca tuve un maestro que sintiera que me quería por favor como los maestros de TFA. Me distraigo mucho con el trabajo escolar y a veces me frustra fácilmente cuando obtengo tareas difíciles. Me ayudaron a mantenerme motivada, no solo con el trabajo escolar, sino también en situaciones de vida. Todos mis maestros muestran que aman lo que hacen. Por ejemplo, la señora Robinson, este es mi segundo año con ella como maestra. No creo que hubiera podido disfrutar de inglés tan mucho como lo hago ahora si no hubiera sido mi maestra. Inglés no es uno de mis temas más fuertes debido a la señora Robinson y estoy agradecida por todo el apoyo de nuestros maestros de TFA y su trabajo duro.
Hola, mi nombre es Kayla McColl.
Y mi nombre es... Y mi nombre es Armani Campos y somos sophomeras en Great Path Academy.
Estamos aquí para hablar de cuánto los maestros de TFA en nuestra escuela nos han influido en nuestra educación.
Algunos de los maestros de TFA en nuestra escuela son la señora Robinson, quien ha sido nuestra maestra de inglés durante dos años.
La señora Roth, quien es ahora nuestra maestra española, el Sr. Mitchell, quien es maestra de inglés y el Sr. Hutchins.
No solo... Lo apreciamos la ayuda que todos nuestros maestros nos ofrecen, por ejemplo, la señora Robinson. No solo apoya nuestros objetivos, sino que nos motiva a lograrlos junto con nuestros otros maestros de TFA.
De todos los maestros que hemos tenido, la señora Robinson es uno de los más involucrados y cariñosos.
Una de las cosas que ambos tenemos que lidiar con es escribir artículos y ensayos. La señora Robinson ha estado allí para ambos de nosotros con creatividad y riguroso.
Esta semana pasada en la clase de la señora Robinson, tuve que escribir un ensayo explorador después de leer el libro "El peor de los peces". La señora Robinson me ayudó a crear un ensayo bien escrito sobre el tema controversial de las figuras mamáficas.
La señora Robinson es solo uno de los ejemplos de cómo dedicados son los maestros de TFA en nuestra escuela.
Asimismo, la señora Roth y sus clases de español en manos, esperamos que el programa se continúe para que las clases futuras puedan experimentar los maestros cariñosos que tenemos hoy.
Gracias.
Por favor, disculpen la pronunciación si no me entiendo bien. Yahira y Shamika de Law and Government Academy.
Buenas noches. Dr. Kishimoto y el Sr. Poland y miembros de la junta. Primero de todo, les quiero decir gracias por darnos la oportunidad de estar aquí para hablar a cargo de nuestros compañeros de la TFA. Mi nombre es Yahira Escrivano.
Y soy Shamika Rivera y somos de la Law and Government Academy de la Escuela de Hartford High.
Y quiero compartir mi experiencia con TFA. Como estudiante de HPHS de toda la vida, he tenido el privilegio de ser educada por algunos maestros sensacionales. Muchos son actuales o antiguos maestros de TFA. TFA ha traído maestros que han transformado la vida de los estudiantes de Hartford. Yo soy la prueba de eso. En octubre, asistí al Trece World Summit de Nobel Peace Prize lawyers en Warsaw, Polonia, cuando la señora Gleason, una maestra de TFA. Sin ella, no podría haber sido uno de los únicos cinco estudiantes de escuelas secundarias estadounidenses para representar nuestro país y nuestra ciudad. Esa experiencia cambió mi vida, mis objetivos, mi percepción del mundo. Me dio un nuevo sentido de esperanza y motivación. Otros maestros de TFA como el Sr. Chansey, la señora Armani, la señora Wilson, la señora Wolfvogel, la lista sigue. Una pasión general y programas en nuestra comunidad que desarrollan caminos para que estudiantes como yo encuentren éxito y superen los estereotipos que a menudo ven en el corazón de los estudiantes. Los maestros de TFA tienen expectativas extremadamente altas. Inicialmente, estábamos intimidados, pero nos dimos cuenta de nuestro verdadero potencial a través de ellos. Son mis mentores quienes dan mi valor educativo y mi confianza. Quiero que mi hermana y las generaciones futuras ganen tanto como tengo de los maestros que TFA trae a Hartford. Encourage a ustedes, el Consejo de Educación de Hartford, a votar por una continuación de asociación.
También quiero compartir mi experiencia. He estado en HPHS durante toda mi carrera de escuela secundaria y cuando llegué, los freshmanes tenían su propia academia. Bajaba con alguien y estaba solo en la escuela porque era mi última opción, así que no estaba demasiado emocionada. Fue una transición difícil de la secundaria a la secundaria y todavía no estaba motivada o comportándome bien. Cada clase fue promedio o por debajo, excepto por inglés, y no porque tuviera un amor por las variables independientes o Shakespeare. Fue debido a nuestro maestro, el Sr. Chansey. Él era nada más promedio. Muestra la mayor energía y pasión que he visto de un maestro, de entusiasticamente golpeando el aire hasta nuestras nuevas ideas de lo débil, tonto, el propósito del autor detrás de su arte. Eso es lo que hizo sentir a la literatura, arte diversa, intrínseca y sin edad. Encontró al poeta interior, filósofo y escritor de historias dentro de todos nosotros y lo convirtió en un rayo que entonces podemos encender por nosotros mismos, dejándonos descubrir las cosas maravillosas que vio en nosotros. Yo solo... No sé dónde estaría sin mis maestros de TFA. Sería aplastada bajo toda la presión de la escuela secundaria.
Son más que maestros para nosotros. Nos han guiado a través de nuestra experiencia secundaria y no tendríamos la oportunidad que teníamos sin ellos. Así que esperamos que consideren todas nuestras perspectivas y continúen su asociación.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Rihanna Tinsley. Oh, lo siento, ¿es a Rida Ferguson? No aquí. Pueden hablar de ella.
Bueno, mi nombre es Brandon Tinsley y soy graduada de la Escuela Pública de Hartford en 2013. También fui a la Academia de Great Path y estoy aquí a cargo de los maestros de TFA. Una de las cosas más importantes para mí, estar en la escuela secundaria, es ser líder en la escuela secundaria. Y antes de tener maestros de TFA, nunca me impulsaron a hacer nada. Solo nos enseñaban las bases y cómo pasar el examen. Y cuando mis maestros de TFA eran como, "haga servicio de la comunidad, haga esto, habla sobre esto". No estaría aquí ahora si no fuera por mis maestros de TFA. Soy una persona muy tímida y todos me impulsaron a hacerlo mejor, a hacer lo mejor posible, a aplicar a los colleges que no pensaba que iba a entrar y entré en todos mis escuelas. La señora Robinson me quería ser TA. Nunca lo hubiera hecho sin ella. No soy alguien que quiere hablar frente a un aula o que quiere estar frente a un aula sin tener que hacer nada. La señora Usher es muy... Son como mis mejores amigos, como en la forma más profesional, como... No... Tenía mucho plan para decir, pero perdí. No sé, realmente los amo. El Sr. Mitchell probablemente fue uno de los maestros más difíciles que tuve, pero no creo que no me apropiaría de matemáticas ahora si no fuera por el Sr. Mitchell. Amo eso y... Y quiero ser maestra misma y tener maestros de TFA ayudarme, no sé si lo haría. Y también he considerado unirse al TFA y estoy realmente agradecida de tener maestros como ellos que están tan invertidos en no solo mi aprendizaje, sino en mi crecimiento como persona. Y honestamente, no sé si hubiera hecho la mitad de las cosas que hice en la escuela secundaria sin ellos antes de empezar a llorar. Gracias.
Shontae Rowdy.
Buenas noches a todos. Tengo tres temas y respeto el balón, así que trato de... Quiero estar en la parte de Vivian. Así que el primero, mi primer preocupación es que, quiero decir, sé, la señora Robinson, el Sr. Chansey, que hemos oído hablar de maestros maravillosos. No pienso que este maestro sea un maestro de TFA, este maestro no lo es. Mi preocupación es el $650,000. Y mi principal preocupación es que los maestros de TFA no están quedando aquí. Así que es como si estuviéramos invirtiendo todo este dinero, pero no están quedando. Están diciendo esta noche que son grandes maestros, pero necesitamos los grandes maestros para quedarse aquí. Ese es mi principal preocupación. Justo como la información proporcionada esta noche, el año escolar de 2010-11, de 23 maestros, tenemos cinco activos ahora. Así es molesto porque estamos gastando dinero mientras que hay otra escuela que necesita una necesidad dura de otros recursos o lo que sea, pero tenemos más de medio millón que se ha gastado en reclutamiento. Así que ese es mi preocupación con respecto a TFA. La segunda cosa es que creo que hay un tipo de movimiento silencioso para las escuelas de Hartford en torno a las escuelas de charter. No tengo ningún problema con las escuelas de charter. Tengo un problema con las tarifas de gestión de las escuelas de charter. Si dices que tengo el mejor plan posible que puedas pensar, lidiamos con niños urbanos, ya sabes, hemos cambiado las escuelas, hemos hecho todo esto y todo aquello y encima estamos pagando todo lo que pagamos por una escuela regular. Le estamos dando un edificio, tienen nuestros hijos, los directores están pagando, y estamos pagando una tarifa de gestión encima de eso. Ese es mi problema con las escuelas de charter, es las tarifas de gestión que les pagamos. Y de nuevo, eso viene de nuestro presupuesto y es dinero que, de nuevo, podría ir a otras escuelas y otros recursos que actualmente necesitamos ahora. Mi tercera es la calificación estandarizada. Recuerdo que en 2009 fui parte de un grupo de padres y el distrito contrató a Ken O'Connor para hablar con nosotros sobre la calificación estandarizada. Creo que es perfecto para el secundario. Cuando llegas a la escuela secundaria, perdón, porque si soy, si estoy criando niños, si las escuelas públicas de Hartford están educando a mis hijos a ser los top en preparándolos para el colegio, el colegio no te permite decir, "de acuerdo, al final del semestre puedes seguir intentando de nuevo para pasar el examen, solo queremos asegurarte de que tengas esta habilidad". No. El examen, vas a tener un examen mediano, no vas a obtener un reto. Es lo que es. Así que personalmente, la calificación estandarizada no está preparando a nuestros hijos para el colegio, para obtener reto y tratar de conseguirlo al final. Es genial para el secundario dominar una habilidad, pero preparar a los estudiantes para el colegio, creo que la calificación estandarizada no es la forma de ir. Gracias.
Daniel Durant.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Daniel Durant y estoy aquí hoy para hablar del tema de TFA. Gracias por la oportunidad de poder expresar mi opinión públicamente en este foro. Estoy hablando básicamente de tres perspectivas diferentes y voy a seguir con esas. Primero de todo, como padre, soy el padre de dos niños y el sistema escolar de Hartford y, ya saben, una de las cosas que me preocupa sobre el tema aquí hoy, uno de los temas que es el tema de "enseñar para Estados Unidos" es, ¿reclutamos a los mejores maestros cualificados? Ya saben, como padre, querría el mejor maestro cualificado en el aula para mis dos niños. Los amo a la muerte y quiero el mejor para ellos. Algo que, ya saben, cuando decimos el mejor, no solo significa bien lo suficiente, significa el mejor, ¿verdad? Y lo que para mí significa el mejor significa los más cualificados, certificados maestros y que, ya saben, y creo que la mayoría, todos nosotros queremos eso, ¿verdad? Así que si estamos hablando de estudiantes, ya saben, mis hijos van a la escuela de anti-fisher STEM y tenemos padres suburbanos allí, tenemos padres de Hartford allí. Y duelo mucho que en nuestros distritos escolares suburbanos, que, ya saben, maestros de "enseñar para Estados Unidos" que vienen sin certificación están siendo utilizados. Quiero decir, alguien dijo antes que Hartford parece ser, ya saben, este campo de pruebas para todas estas ideas diferentes y por qué esto no pasa en los distritos suburbanos, ¿por qué pasa aquí? Eso es una gran preocupación para mí, ya saben, que esto debería, que deberíamos tener los más cualificados, lo que significa maestros que van a quedarse a largo plazo. Solo escuchaste a la señora Brody hablar de cómo, ya saben, los maestros no están quedando a largo plazo, ya saben, que no están necesariamente comprometidos todo el tiempo para tener enseñanza como su carrera. Así que definitivamente ese es uno de mis preocupaciones como padre. Eso es lo que siento. También soy presidente del Comité de Educación para la NAACP y hablé con mi presidente sobre este tema aquí. Y una de las cosas que habíamos hablado, habíamos tenido una reunión con el Dr. Kishimoto más tarde en el año pasado y hablábamos de, ya saben, dónde está el reclutamiento para maestros de color, ¿verdad? Ya saben, Hartford es, ya saben, una ciudad donde, ya saben, la mayoría de los niños de la población aquí en Hartford son negros y hispanos. ¿Por qué usamos todos estos recursos para reclutar sin, cuando no podemos muy bien reclutar desde dentro? ¿Dónde están los becas para nuestros propios hijos aquí en Hartford que, ya saben, han elegido la educación como su camino de carrera? Ya saben, podemos empezar a conseguir a nuestros hijos empleados. No hay escasez de maestros, personas de color que han ido a la profesión de la enseñanza. ¿Por qué no usar los recursos allí? Es una cuestión de recursos y cómo están siendo aplicados. Hartford Rising es también otro grupo de comunidad que soy parte de y este grupo es un grupo que ha decidido que hay un número de cosas que creemos que son derechos que todos deberíamos tener en relación con la atención médica, la educación, la vivienda, los trabajos y la seguridad en nuestros barrios y creamos una Basilea de Derechos de la Comunidad de la cual la educación es una pieza muy importante de nuestra Basilea de Derechos de la Comunidad. Y, ya saben, de nuevo, dos de nuestros problemas son los trabajos y la educación. Así que ahora estamos hablando de educación aquí y estamos hablando de trabajos. Ya saben, hay muchos tipos de certificados o tal vez incluso de certificados. Quiero decir, dame un trabajo como maestro, no soy certificado, tengo un título de máster. Quiero decir, ese tipo de cosas, simplemente parece que hay otras formas de abordar las necesidades que la gente en nuestra comunidad está sintiendo. Los trabajos, la educación es importante y estamos realmente preocupados por cómo se gastan los recursos.
Gracias. Larry Deutsch.
Buenas noches. Escuchando a los que han acabo de hablar, puedes decir que hay mucho de lo que estar de acuerdo en ambos lados y lo lamentable es que parece que hay dos lados. A veces, lamentablemente, hay un contraste entre esos individuos entusiastas reclutados a través de TFA y esos ciudadanos y padres y maestros que han estado aquí durante años y que pueden ser buenos maestros, igual de bien que los maestros reclutados a través de TFA. Espero que todos podamos pensar en esos maestros y puedo pensar en mis hijos, todos tres, que fueron a las escuelas públicas de Hartford, que adoraron y admiraron y estuvieron estimulados por sus maestros, completamente cualificados, certificados, cualificados, algunos de ellos tenían másteres, estimulados, desafiaron a los estudiantes. Si escribieron un artículo que no fue bueno, dijeron, "reescriba". Y esto podría ser un maestro, quién sabe, que ha estado aquí diez, veinte, treinta años. Así que no es justo contrastar a los que vienen a través de TFA versus a los que han estado aquí, que han demostrado su dedicación a la ciudad y a los estudiantes. ¿Podemos pensar en esos maestros que nos han desafiado, que han estado aquí? Así que creo que lo más lamentable es tener un contraste en lugar de una asociación. Digamos de esa manera, esa es una forma positiva de decirlo. Cuando lo hice hace cien años como maestro joven, fui reclutado después de un curso de física, química y matemáticas porque había escasez entonces. Así que después de un título de máster en esos campos, fue fácil para ellos decir, "miren, necesitamos a ustedes, les daremos unos créditos en educación para ir a las escuelas secundarias o secundarias". No lo hice, fue estimulante, pero eso fue porque había escasez de maestros completamente cualificados para hacerlo. Ahora se me dice que no lo es realmente. Algunos de estos involucran la explotación de dinero para TFA y la otra pregunta es, ¿podemos hacerlo nosotros mismos? ¿No puede el Consejo, los directores, los padres y los estudiantes decir que hay abierturas de trabajo, conocemos buenos maestros en las escuelas públicas de Hartford, ven y apliquemos y lo valoraremos? Lo entrevistaremos, lo recomendará. ¿Por qué es necesario una vez más sumar un contrato a una organización externa como algunos de nosotros estamos tratando de hacer para Washington DC, que es la Comisión de Educación estatal, algunos están tratando de hacer para Vermont? ¿No podemos confiar en nuestra propia fuerza, lo cual, mucho de lo cual está en la audiencia, en lugar de ir y gastar el dinero de la ciudad para empresas externas que vienen y van a través de donaciones, pero no construimos una fuerza permanente de todos nosotros aquí en la ciudad? Así que en realidad, eso es probablemente suficiente. Ahora, cuando escuchas algunos aplausos y te das cuenta de que estás tratando de ser positivo y no tener una reflexión negativa sobre aquellos que han sido maestros dedicados por un tiempo, entonces intentemos mantener y respetar a esos y sacar de aquellos que están disponibles. those, and pull from those who are available through our own, uh, state university education courses, our own city experience. They exist, let's find them, draw them from all kinds of communities right here, as the speaker said, and rely on ourselves. Thank you.
Andrea Johnson and Ed Vargas.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Kishimoto. I'm here this evening to speak against the proposal to pay Teach for America $651,000 for a three-year contract to recruit teachers from their organization. This contract will hire 210 recruits from top colleges across the country over the next three years. Top colleges, TFA top colleges, fail, this fails to include Connecticut colleges and universities, which have outstanding teacher preparation programs, which graduate students that are Connecticut ready certified teachers. Graduates that may not have gone to an Ivy League college, but certainly studied for four long years in a teacher preparation program. Graduates that are from Connecticut, and in many cases have families that sacrificed to send them to college to become teachers. Graduates who are eager to teach in Hartford, Connecticut, but not offer positions in Hartford, Connecticut due to many of those positions being taken by other folks from TFA, leaving much fewer jobs, opportunities for local state teachers. The $650,000 that is being proposed to be given to TFA could be used in many, for many other purposes, including but not limited to some of the following. Reinstating the art teacher from Nursing Academy, Academy next year who is being removed. Purchase more books for high schools that are lacking many of these books. Fully implement Miller's turnaround program. Place more than two special police officers in large schools with three floors. Place additional paraprofessionals in special, with special needs students who require one-on-one pairs, but get two or three-on-one as an option. Repair our schools that are in disrepair. The question is, why would the Hartford Board of Education pay the TFA organization a headhunter fee to recruit teachers when we have the Office of Talent Management to recruit teachers? Why are we paying twice for the same service? We must have the very best for our Hartford students, well-trained teachers. Thank you.
Sandra Inga.
Good evening, Chairman Pollan, Dr. Kishimoto, Mayor Sagara, my colleagues and my community friends. I think the easiest way for me to stick to three minutes is to just read this letter that I wrote to you last week, Chairman Pollan and the board. Dear Chairman Pollan and the Hartford Board of Education members, on behalf of the Hartford Principal and Supervisors Association, I want to thank Chairman Pollan for his service to the Hartford Board of Education and to our children and the Hartford community. I also want to extend a warm welcome to our new board members, Dr. Taylor, Mr. Stallings, and Mr. Bressia. Finally, I want to thank Superintendent Kishimoto for her many years of service to Hartford students and to the community, and wish her much success in her new position. On another note, the tenor of the recent Board of Education meetings must be addressed. As an employee of the Hartford Public School and as a member of the greater Hartford community, it is disheartening that recent events during Board meetings continually demonstrate a lack of respect for our superintendent, our teachers, our administrators, and our staff. While it is important to value all speakers, we must all adhere to and enforce parliamentarian rules so that the public comments speak to relevant issues and do not turn into personal attacks. With a focus on the Connecticut Code of Professional Responsibility, we will avoid situations where one union member is allowed to attack or make recommendations regarding the placement of behavior of an administrator in another union, and I speak specifically about recently Principal Heredia at Sands, and more recently, Principal Steve Peria over at Capital. This is not the purpose nor the place for verbal attacks. The appointment of an administrator and other related issues is not a union prerogative, but rather the purview of the Board of Education. Recently, the Board meetings have become circus-like, and the level of disrespect is a source of disappointment, and certainly not what one expects of the Hartford professional community. Our children observe us, and we, they model our, we model behavior. So it is essential that we begin anew and commit ourselves to have an open and honest dialogue among all community stakeholders without resorting to personal attacks. As the HPSA President, I look forward to working with all of you as you assume your new roles and responsibilities. On behalf of HPSA, we pledge our support and collaboration as we work toward the shared goal to do our best for all Hartford students and for the Hartford community. Thank you.
Tracy Carter.
Hello, Board members. I'd like to give my time to, um, William Morrison, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Honored Board and Superintendent. Um, I've listened to the comments tonight with a great deal of interest and appreciation for both sides. I'm a department chair in my school for the Social Studies Department, and I have a TFA teacher who works in that department in attendance tonight. I've won, um, TFA teachers for the past 11 years while I've been in Hartford, and I've been impressed with many of them. But I'm forced to reflect that teaching is a profession, and professions have professional standards, and Connecticut has always had an extremely rigorous professional certification program for teachers, for superintendents, for administrators, um, just as it does for people in other professions, like doctors, attorneys, nurses, et cetera. In those other professions, we do not allow, um, shortened, um, five-week programs. Um, the professions have professional standards that are expected to be learned over years and honed through practice and, um, and developed through testing, as certified teachers do within this state who go through, through the Connecticut programs here. Unlike other states, our programs are extremely rigorous. Teachers to get in must have a, um, a, a high GPA from any university. I feel that we're losing sight of those requirements. I know for a fact that we're looking for a superintendent right now to replace the Honorable Christina Kishimoto. You're not going to take anybody from a bargain basement program. You're going to take a highly certified person, hopefully, and rightly so. So it's with a great deal of trepidation to the TFA teachers whom I've known, I feel that we've got to recruit from within the state first, those teachers who have graduated from a program within the state, a college program who are coming to us fully certified. TFA, to me, is perfectly fine if to fill positions that we can't fill from those other programs. If there's a mass shortage of science or math teachers, for example, and a TFA grad or participant is willing to, uh, come and work under those conditions, great. But we need certified teachers first and foremost. We're educated, not trained. We're educated in things that go beyond teaching method. We're educated in dealing with the whole child and brain development and brain research, and how the, uh, individual child development applies to the classroom. And I feel that we're losing sight of that by going to other programs. Uh, that said, um, I'm sure the board will do the right thing, and I have high respect for all of you, and, um, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Shelley Davis.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sagara, Board members. Welcome to the new board members, Dr. Kishimoto. The Board of Education is once again willing to fork over $650,000 to a third party, on top of the salaries to be paid to teachers themselves and the training to be provided to new TSAs every two years. $650,000 should instead be spent directly on the children in the city of Hartford, in the form of cleaner schools, more programs, more paraprofessionals for the IEPs that are not being met, better facilities. We also have graduates of Connecticut schools, residents, who want jobs as teachers and do not get them. Yet, we're willing to bring in people from Pittsburgh and Richmond for two years. Our children in the city of Hartford deserve teachers who are committed to the community, who will stay here and provide stability to the same community. We have had paraprofessionals over the last couple of years who have their teaching certification. We have paraprofessionals with master degrees. Why could we not take those same paraprofessionals who have worked in the system, that know the kids, know what goes on, and make them teachers? Why couldn't we do that, instead of spending all this money for a third party, and we don't have a guarantee that everybody's going to stay for a little while? Let us end this portion of our address by referring to the, the board members to the following news articles of Teach for America. The Washington Post on October 2013 says Harvard Students Say Do Not Teach for America. The Atlantic on September 2013 says I Quit Teach for America. National Public Radio, June 11, 2012, is Teach for America failing. The Huffington Post on October 23, 2013, why, why I say no to Teach for America, and why should you? Hopefully, you, the members, could read these articles before you vote. Our children deserve better.
Carmen Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pollan, and members of the Board of Education, Hartford, Connecticut. I am here because it hurt me deeply to know when this board, which I respect very much each and every one of you, thinks that my profession is homewash. That's exactly how I feel. I worked for four hard years. I had six children at the time, but I wanted to be a teacher, because human growth and development excites me, and helping someone else is always a cleansing of the soul. What I haven't heard mentioned here today is the many colleges that train teachers or teach teachers haven't been mentioned. They should all go out of business, because if we need kids, young people, and I take the kids back, to become part-time teachers, fly-by-night teachers, what kind of teachers? I don't know. When, when in fact, that money could help make better teachers of the one we have. It just doesn't make any sense to me. But let me tell you, uh, my being a teacher is the best thing that ever happened to me. There's nothing, when you are a real teacher, you get involved with the family, you get involved with the, uh, mechanisms that make this body work, you get involved with everything. I'll tell you, I was at the beginning of this program, and I, I was going to say something very harsh, because I came here at five o'clock, and many of the people that had spoken came here later, and I sat there patiently waiting to be called, and I realized that maybe someone is in charge of who goes when. It's not as, as American as we think the process is, and I had to let you know for the future. Uh, thank you very much.
I understand your concern, Ms. Rodriguez, on the order. Uh, this process is about when you sign the form, unfortunately, and your name didn't come up until page eight, so I'm, I'm sorry about that. Okay, okay. It's a deal. Thank you very much.
Carrie Kina.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Dr. Kishimoto, Mayor Pollan, and Board members and my colleagues in the room. Um, I agree. I think children have a right to an excellent education. They have a right to teachers who are completely and totally invested in them, and to experience, and experienced teachers do. We do deserve to be recognized. That's absolutely true. I am a proud member of, um, well, I'm a proud teacher of our children here in Hartford, and a proud member of the Hartford Public School system. I'm also a proud member of the TFA Connecticut Corps. This is my 22nd year in the classroom, my first with TFA. I taught for three years in New York and then in St. Louis. I moved overseas, and there I taught for another 17. I came back in 2012. I came back home. This is where I grew up, in Connecticut. And it never occurred to me not to teach. I can't imagine doing anything else. I love kids. I love working with them. I love helping them to grow as human beings, as individuals, as well as to learn their subject. They're our future. Simple as that. When I came back, I looked into different venues for certification here in Connecticut. As everybody knows, there are a variety of them. I could have done any of them. But I saw TFA, and I was absolutely fascinated. I was still overseas at the time. I read as much as I could, pro con, everything. Um, I was totally in. I applied, and as I went through the process, was really impressed with the way in which they chose the people to come on board. When I was overseas, I didn't just teach, I was also an inspector, and I worked in administration, so I've seen things from the other side. We, we just have to remember that children are number one. That's it. And how to work with them is number one. Um, we need to give them a passion, uh, for being. We need to weave this into our lessons, into our after-school lessons. This is something that TFA absolutely embodies. And something that I really liked, given my age, was TFA's commitment to diversity for people like me. Fifteen percent of our Connecticut Corps include dedicated and experienced educators such as myself. And what better way to give back to this state where I got my education than to turn around and do the same? What better way to give our children not only hope, but real tools, all-around tools, to make their dreams come true? As I said at the beginning, I'm a, I'm a proud, a proud teacher of our children and future leaders. I'm a proud member. I'm a proud member to be here in Hartford Public Schools. I'm a proud member of the TFA Corps and I plan on being in the Hartford Public Schools for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Raquel Calderon. Raquel Calderon. Nicole Selmone.
Good evening, Dr. Kishimoto, Chairman Pollan, Mayor Sagara, and other board members. My name is Nicole Selmone. I'm a TFA alumnus and a third-year teacher at Hartford Public High School's Law and Government Academy. Yahira and Shinika, students who spoke earlier, are some of my own and I'd like to thank them for being here and sharing their experiences with all of us. I'd now like to share a little bit about my experience in TFA. I joined TFA for different reasons. The most important is that I spent five years at the University of Massachusetts studying abroad in China, studying math in Mandarin. And rather than completing a teacher preparation program, I had to graduate in five years. I could not possibly spend any more time in school. So I left UMass Amherst with no certification, but it wasn't because I hadn't dreamt of being a teacher since I was in first grade, but because it simply had not fit into my graduation plan at the time. Therefore, the prospect of joining an organization that is dedicated to fighting the achievement gap and could help train and certify me was ideal. The second reason was because by nature, I'm a helper. It's what I do almost to a fault. I love to feel needed. I love to be around kids. I love to teach and I love a challenge. TFA promised to not only train me and get me fully certified as a teacher in Connecticut, but to help me find a job in a place where I would be needed. I never thought I would end up in CT, if I'm being honest. Connecticut is not my home. I grew up in Rhode Island. I went to school in Massachusetts. However, three years later, here I am, still living and teaching in Hartford, completely in love with this city, this district, and our kids. I even actually put in a final real estate offer on a house in Berry Square in South End of Hartford tonight, so. Teaching is a challenge. I have learned and grown tremendously in the last three years, but it is still a hard job, especially as a new teacher, for anyone. And even in just my three years as a teacher at Hartford Public High School, I've seen many teachers, traditionally trained and not, come and go because it was too much. I'm here because my heart has been stolen entirely by the students of Hartford and because I've had support in being here. I know that when I'm struggling or feeling overwhelmed, I have a support system at my disposal. I've attended many TFA professional development sessions and Saturday conferences that have helped me persevere and grow as a teacher. I have a support network that I can reach out to with questions, concerns, and ideas, and receive invaluable help and feedback from my classroom and my students. While the question of how our children are being served is an important, valid one that should always remain in the forefront of our minds as educators, the time and energy currently being expended debating which method of teacher preparation or training is best is nothing but wasteful and detrimental to our students. We have bigger issues to address. It's insulting to our profession that anyone would consider training alone in defining a teacher. I may have completed an alternate route to certification program to receive my certification rather than go the traditional route, but I am no less a teacher than the 38-year veteran on my team, the second career teacher next door to me, or the traditional route new college graduate who stayed only a year before moving on to another field or school. When we enter the doors of Hartford Public High School, we do not delineate between traditional TFA or another alternate route to certification, just as we wouldn't compare any traditional teaching programs to another. We are all in this fight together and this infighting is not helpful to our students. I am not TFA. I am a teacher. We're on the same team. We write curriculum, make lesson plans, grade homework, call home, have conferences, use technology, give hugs, attend professional development, and facilitate learning. But most of all, we care. And I care. We care about our students as people and we care about their success. And I believe TFA teachers are valuable partners and additions to their schools and our community. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Sayida Ray.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sayida Ray and I am a Hartford native. I'm a 2007 proud TFA Corps member. This is my seventh year teaching in the Hartford Public School System and I am fully certified. And in addition to this, I am a Hartford homeowner, taxpayer, and parent of a child who attends a school in Hartford. Just to start off, I'm going to start with that I grew up in poverty myself. I was placed into the DCF custody, separated from my neighbors, siblings, and placed into the foster care system. Things were tough and even more so for my siblings who went from foster home to group home to being homeless. And while attending a Hartford Public School as a youngster, I was affected by my home situation and I was shy and I didn't talk. And so I was labeled as special ed. But then, a couple of years later, a caring teacher came along, much like other teachers here at Teach for America teachers, who realized that I wasn't special ed, I was actually just shutting everyone out. She helped me to open up and realize and demonstrate my true academic potential. And that's what I want to be for my own students. I got into my head that my only way out of poverty was to be rich in knowledge. So I labored over my schoolwork. I received a scholarship to a private school in West Hartford and then went on to be the first one to graduate from college in my family, Trinity College, right here in Hartford, Connecticut. I believe and teach for America's mission for students to be afforded a quality education regardless of their backgrounds or socioeconomic status. And for so many of our students who come from similar backgrounds as me, education is our only way out. This is why I decided to become a teacher, to help urban students and kids like me. And being given the chance to close the achievement gap in my own neighborhood, this is why I decided to join Teach for America. Thank you.
Luke Bodding.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Luke Bodding and I taught seventh and eighth grade science at RJ Kinsella Magnet School, performing arts for three years, beginning in 2009 as a Teach for America Corps member and continuing as an alumni teacher. I'm currently a high school teacher in Bridgeport, actually. I joined Teach for America so I could teach in Hartford and earn my certificate through TFA's state-accredited alternate route to certification. Over my three-year period at Kinsella, the percentage of students achieving proficient or above on the state assessment grew 37%. Also, the percentage of students achieving gold or above grew 26%. So I'm told that that's a pretty good, pretty good mark. My leadership coach and colleagues through Teach for America were pivotal in teaching me how to become a strong leader today. And while at Kinsella, I was also asked to become a member and leader within the recruitment team and curriculum writing teams within the district. This isn't about me, though. This is about my students. My students were invested in their learning, motivated to take life by the horns and achieve their dreams. My students were able to achieve at such a result, at such a high result, because of the training and the support I received as a Teach for America Corps member. The network of dedicated leaders and experienced educators that I was able to leverage directly impacted my students on a regular basis. From helping with curriculum design and lesson plans to sharing ideas around building student investment and leadership, the Teach for America support network was monumental in helping my students achieve at a high level. This network continues to impact my students today. In fact, this year, one of my most influential former students once again has a Teach for America Corps member as her science teacher at Buckley High School. The student is now becoming a powerful leader within her school with my colleague as her guide. My Teach for America Corps member and alumni, my time as a Teach for America Corps member and alumni teacher has been influential in how I view myself as a leader in the movement for educational equity. I'm a witness to the tremendous power, passion, perseverance, and overall just amazing capability of our students in Hartford. Teach for America has tremendously helped me cultivate my leadership skills and knowledge for the opportunity gap. I'm now more than ever committed to helping our collective achievement of educational equity for all students. This comes as a direct result from my experience in the classroom, thanks to the Hartford Public Schools Teach for America relationship. I'm confident that a continued partnership between Teach for America and Hartford Public Schools will continue to bring dedicated and lasting talent to Hartford. We're all fighting for the same end goal, that all students receive a quality education. I'm grateful to have had the chance to serve my kids and I'm even more excited about the work that continues to be done day after day by my colleagues and partners in our fight for our students. Thank you.
Chelsea Usher.
Hello, thank you, Board. Dr. Kishimoto, Mayor Sagara, thank you for having me. My name is Chelsea Usher and as both a fully certified public school teacher here in Hartford and a Teach for America Corps member, I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to tell you how Hartford's greatest minds have become my passion in the classroom. Originally, I am from Southern California, but within the days, within days of being here, I was instantly compelled to give everything within me so that the minds in my classroom here in Hartford could succeed. Coming from a low-income, single-parent household, I was the first and only person in my family to graduate college. It was in my very first classroom, in kindergarten, that I realized my dream. I knew I wanted to teach, but it wasn't until I was in high school that I realized just how difficult that path would become. On the other side of the desk, I think about that path every day. It wasn't easy. I did everything backwards. An Ivy League graduate. Instead, I spent four years in a community college, then two years at a university, all while working multiple jobs to support my own education. I think about how I can be proof that opportunities are out there if we reach for them and fight for them every day. I'm fortunate to have worked in two wonderfully different and diverse schools here in Hartford with over 160 students and their families in the district. And I'd like you to consider Teach for America's place here. TFA enabled me to immediately realize my dream, to educate and to learn from my students. To see my seniors from the class of 2013 get their college acceptance letters and then graduate high school, and now to see my freshman class learn and grow as independent and critical thinkers. But I'm not alone. I'm privileged enough to work with some astonishingly fresh minds through Teach for America in Hartford. The passion and perseverance I see from my fellow Corps members here in Hartford is wonderful and compelling. We may be recent college graduates, but I don't see that as a negative attribute. Instead, I see that as a strength unparalleled. We come in with heart and soul, with drive and a strong vision. And while we received great support and development from Teach for America in our two years, we also come into our schools like sponges, ready to absorb and learn everything we can from our administration and our veteran colleagues to be the best we can be for the students. As a second-year Corps member, my TFA commitment is coming to an end, but my drive and vision are still in their infancy. Hartford is amazingly diverse in its city, full of remarkable community members and organizations and families, and I'm not done there yet. I've known since I was six that I wanted to teach and through my commitment to TFA, I know that I want to stay here in Hartford. In fact, I'm currently pursuing a teaching leadership degree through Quinnipiac's graduate program so that I can develop my skill set to be more effective in the classroom. My heart is here in Hartford and I'm not alone when I say that. Teach for America brought me to this community and I'd like to ask this community to allow Teach for America to stay.
Christine Ladd.
Good evening, Mayor Sagara, Board Members, and Superintendent Kishimoto. My name is Christine Ladd. I'm a school counselor at Sport Medical Sciences Academy and a 25-year veteran of the Hartford Public Schools. I have taught in grades one, two, five, six, seven, eight, 11, and 12, and worked as a counselor with students in grades seven to 12. At Wish School, Buckley High School, Caneli School, Hartford Magnet Middle School, and now Sport Medical Sciences Academy. I have some questions and concerns about the Teach for America program. I have worked with many first-year teachers and student teachers over the past 25 years, graduates from the University of Hartford, University of New Haven, Central, Southern, Eastern, St. Joe's, and UConn. I have also worked with Teach for America members who have graduated from schools in Massachusetts, California, Texas, and other states. The TFA teachers I have worked with taught English, social studies, and first grade. As a school counselor, I work with seniors who are considering their futures. A few have indicated they would like to pursue careers in education. Many of these students were inspired to choose this profession by the teachers they encountered in the Hartford Public Schools. They are enrolling at local, state, and private universities. I have some questions about TFA and the contract you are to vote on tonight. When Hartford Public Schools students graduate in four or five years from a teaching program, will there be jobs for them in the Hartford Public Schools or will these jobs go to Teach for America? Does the contract you will sign tonight, that you may sign tonight with TFA, state that you must fill 210 slots with TFA members? In other words, if you sign a contract for 210 slots, does that mean you won't hire local people until those 210 are filled? Was the goal to find people willing to work in shortage areas? Are English, social studies, and first-grade positions considered shortage areas? I believe physics is considered a shortage area, but the first-year physics teacher at SMSA is an education graduate from UConn, not a TFA member. Is there another use you can find for $650,000? School counselors, librarians, music teachers are absent from many of the schools. What about books for the libraries? The Tansis Early Reading Lab School has a library without any books in it. If you vote yes tonight, would you be willing to visit the high schools in Hartford and explain to our seniors why you believe that pursuing a career in education with the hopes of finding a job in the Hartford Public Schools would be a mistake? Thank you.
Michael Downs, please.
Good evening, Board Members, Chairman, Superintendent, Mayor. I'm here to urge the Board to vote against the Teach for America contract this evening. The money could be better spent on the neighborhood schools, such things as enhancing parental involvement, the need for more special education teachers in the schools, need for health teachers, the need for guidance counselors, the need for more adults in the classrooms to make learning more successful. Teach for America candidates or teachers take the place of certified teachers right here in the city of Hartford, state of Connecticut. They graduate from less prestigious schools, some of whom are substitute teachers. And also, some of these Teach for America teachers, I guess, are eligible to have some of their student loans forgiven or repaid, something that substitute teachers right here in Hartford don't have. And so I, again, would urge you to vote no on the Teach for America. The money could be spent much better than these other areas. And I'd like to congratulate Superintendent Dr. Kishimoto on her new position. And I'd like to thank Mr. Pollan for a job well done.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. The February meeting is the, by policy, the Hartford Board of Education organizational meeting. The Board of Education conducts this annual organization meeting every February. We are tonight, however, going to, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and postpone the election of officers. postpone the election of officers for the offices of Vice Chair, Second Vice Chair, and Secretary until the March 18th regular meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. So the election that we will have tonight is for the position of Board Chair, and I will now take nominations for the office of Board Chair.
Mr. President. Chair, I approve the nomination of Richard Waring as the position of President of the Hartford Board of Education.
Mr. Waring, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Any other nomination on the floor for the office of Chair of the Board? Having heard none, I now close the nominations for Chair of the Board. I'd ask the Board members to please complete the ballot that is at their seat. The votes of the Board of Education are unanimous for Mr. Richard Waring as the new Chairman of the Board of Education. Mr. Waring, I proudly present the gavel to you, and I know that your commitment to the Hartford Public School system is a solid one, and I wish you the best, and I look forward to continue serving on the Board along with you. Thank you very much for taking on this service.
Mr. President. If I could have a point of personal privilege, Mr. President, before you hand over the gavel. I just want to thank you, as Mayor, for the incredible commitment and dedication that you have shown to this Board as its president for the last two years. Not once, not once have I ever questioned your total dedication to our children and to what's best for them. And I want to thank you for the thousands of hours that you have volunteered for this Board, but more importantly, I want to thank you for the passion with which you have done that. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So now, Mr. Waring, here is your gavel, and you can take over immediately. Effective now. Thank you, Mr. Pollan. Oh, he's got to be swaying.
Will you take over? We'll swear you down. Richard Wright, do you solemnly swear affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, so all of your continueness and thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge according to the law and duties of the office of Chairman and Board to the best of your ability to help you down?
I'd also like to thank our outgoing Chairman, Matt Pollan. Matt and I not only serve on this Board together, but we're neighbors and we're friends, so I get to see a side of Matt that most people do not get to see. We all know that Matt is a very capable public servant, and that he's a true son of our city, lived his whole life here, and has deep, deep roots in our city. What most do not see, but I get to see, is the very personal and emotional commitment and the sacrifice that Matt has made to the Board and to the chairmanship. Matt, I want to thank you for all the hard work you've done over the last two years. It's now my job to continue and expand on the good work you've already done. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, my fellow Board members, thank you. There is no bigger honor in our city than being chosen to lead the Board of Education, because there's nothing more important than the work we do here. I will work every day for the next 12 months to prove that your choice was a good one tonight, and I thank you for your confidence in me. Start the reports. We move to the reports. Item 6, Report to the Chair. I have a few things to raise. The first is, last week, I was able to attend the calling hours for Doc Hurley. I won't eulogize him, because those who knew him far better than I did have already done that, and they did it far better than I could ever hope to. I will note, though, that in a world where we glorify people who are beautiful, or athletically gifted, or wealthy, or just have a knack for getting in front of a camera as heroes or role models, we overlook people like Doc, people who work quietly and tirelessly every day of their life to make their own local community a better place. And people like Doc are true heroes because of the commitment that they have to their home, and to their families, and to their friends, and their neighbors. I read with sadness in the Hartford Current earlier this week that Doc's house is in foreclosure, so it appears that Doc was not rich in the things of this world. But Doc was rich in love, and he was rich in spirit, and he leaves behind a wealth of love, and happiness, and joy, and goodwill in this city, and that is an inheritance for his family and his friends that they can be very proud of, and they can take a lot of joy in. And, you know, I think, when we think about success, you know, that is one way to think about success, which is the good you do and what remains when you're gone. And in Doc's case, it'll be a long time, if ever, before Doc's name is forgotten in our city because of all the lives that he touched in his long, long years as an employee of the Board and as a private citizen thereafter. Next month, we will present Doc's family with a resolution honoring him for the service, not only to our community, but specifically as an employee of the Board of Education. So I'd ask Ms. Kaufman to prepare an appropriate resolution, and Dr. Kishimoto and the staff to provide Ms. Kaufman with the necessary details, and also to get a representative or representatives from Doc's family to come next month so that we can make that presentation. I think that that's about the very least we can do for Doc in light of all the things that Doc did for us. At this time, I'd like to read out the committee assignments for the coming year, and also to identify some of the things that I would like these committees to do. First committee is Finance and Audit Committee. I will remain Chair of that committee. Mr. Pollan, the Mayor, and Mr. Stallings will serve on that committee. We will continue to work to monitor transportation costs, which are moving in a very positive direction, but are still at a point where they need a lot of attention. We will also work closely with Claire Kennedy and her staff, and also with Paula Altieri, to monitor and better control special education costs. This year, we made real progress in containing budget shortfalls unsped, thanks in large part to some of the reforms that Dr. Kishimoto developed and we've implemented this year, but there's still a lot of work to be done. Special ed remains an incredible financial challenge for this district, and probably one of the greatest long-term threats to our financial viability if it's not managed properly. So we have a lot more work to do there, but it definitely was a positive year, and I think Claire and her team, and Dr. Kishimoto, and Paula Altieri all deserve, in some measure, the thanks for that. The second committee will be the Parent Engagement Committee, Parent and Community Engagement Committee. That will be chaired by Mr. Stallings, and Mr. Cotto and Dr. Taylor will serve on that committee. I want that committee to start immediately reviewing our existing policies and programs relating to parent engagement, and also specifically our implementation of Students' Governance Council. I think, well, there have been issues this year, which I think call into question the state of certain SGCs at a couple of schools, or at least their ability to communicate with the broader community, and that needs to be examined, and to the extent there are problems at individual schools, they need to be identified, and they need to be rectified. Policy. The Policy Committee will be co-chaired by Dr. Taylor and by the Mayor, and its members will also include Dr. Cologne Rivas and Mr. Brescher. My understanding is there's something of a backlog at the Policy Committee right now, and I'd like to have that backlog cleared by the March meeting, and then I'd like the Policy Committee to work with Parent Engagement on reviewing our SGC and parent engagement policies. That works parent engagement in nature, but all that eventually works its way back through the Policy Committee. Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee will consist of Mr. Pollan as Chair, who's agreed to stay on and serve that function, which I appreciate very much, Mr. Brescher, and Dr. Cologne Rivas, and that committee needs to be prepared to work with our incoming Superintendent when we have an offer of employment that's accepted, in terms of the development of a contract and the development of agreed-to performance criteria. Finally, the School Choice and Facilities Committee, which will be chaired by Dr. Cologne Rivas, and will include Mr. Brescher and Mr. Cotto. And I'd like that committee to sit down as soon as possible with the consella community, central office in the city, to try to find a solution to that problem, which is acceptable to all the stakeholders, and especially to the consella community. We have some hard decisions there, and we need to get working on that immediately. There are a number of other appointments to Boards, the Library Board being one, and there are several others. School Building Committee comes to mind. Those appointments will be made in the coming weeks after I have a chance to sit down and talk more in detail with some of our members about where they might be willing to serve. I'd like to take a few minutes to identify what I believe are the five major objectives for the Board between now and June 30th. First and foremost, we will hire a Superintendent. We will devote whatever time, attention, and resources are necessary to make the right decision. This will be the single most important decision that any of us will make on this Board, almost certainly, and on July 1, we will have a great Superintendent under contract and in place, no matter how much work that takes. Second, as I've already said, the Parent Engagement Committee is charged with an immediate review of our policies, and they will propose improvements by July 1. We must accelerate parental involvement, and we must dramatically increase the capacity of our parents to be involved. We must also put greater emphasis on helping parents determine for themselves what they want for their children, and on getting them the skills, the information, and the tools they need to help make decisions and to help their children learn. The cornerstone of a strong school system and a strong democratic community is parent and citizen participation. As the representatives of our parents and of our city, we, the Board, have an obligation to drive this process, and we will. Third, we will work with our Clark parents to identify, develop, and begin to implement a plan for that school. We cannot, and we will not, end this year without having a plan in place that gives the Clark community every reason to be optimistic. It seems like a long time ago I made a promise to Clark parents that I would never support a plan for their school which they themselves did not support. I keep my promises. Any plan for Clark will be parent-driven. For too long, people who lived elsewhere have been allowed to decide our future, our children's future, and our city's future. That stops. Hartford's future and the future of our children is for us to decide. Fourth, we will continue to Fourth, we will continue to improve our non-magnet facilities. We've already made a dent in this area, in terms of the extensive list of repairs and upgrades that our oldest schools need, and we will continue to invest every available dollar in this area, which means any surpluses which we may run at year-end. We also will ask the city for additional capital improvement funds, specifically for repair and upgrades to our older facilities. We know that the city's financial situation is delicate, but we also know there's no better investment than our children. We will also complete and begin to implement the uniform standards for cleanliness and upkeep, which were recommended last year by a special committee of the Board. Not all our schools are modern, and sadly, not even all of them are well-equipped, but they can all and they will all be clean and well-organized and in good order. Neither the Chair nor the Board will tolerate any excuses in this area going forward. This is an absolute priority, without which nothing much can happen. If we don't have a good, solid environment for our kids in every school, it's hard to expect great results. I am thinking specifically of a day when I was at Milner School before the turnaround plan, and I was in the library with some parents, and it was not in a very good state. There were two clocks, neither of which worked. There were holes in the walls, holes in the carpets, and assorted other real, real problems. And I think some of you know I was very privileged in my own education, and I looked at some of these parents, and I said, "Would you like your kids to go to an Ivy League school someday?" And uniformly, they said, "Yeah, of course." And I said, "Well, I'll tell you what an Ivy League school doesn't look like, doesn't look like this." And we cannot expect our kids to be winners, to achieve, to build better lives for themselves, their own families, if we don't provide them with a quality physical environment. I don't, actually, I do mean to sound pathetic. This is going to be an area in which I intend to place a lot of priority as Chairman. All our schools will be in the best shape they can be, and they will be clean and well-ordered, and there will be uniform standards which will be high, and they will be enforced. Finally, the Board will take the lead on attacking chronic absenteeism. My friend, Mr. Pollan, has been hot on this issue for six or seven months now, and he was absolutely right to do so. We need to start taking action on the strong words that he properly said. A lot of this work, obviously, will be done by the employees of the Board, but we ourselves have a critical role to play. We have to make available the necessary funds, which we will. We will adopt the necessary procedures as recommended to us by our employees, and in this case, it'll be our job as representatives of our city and community to drive the implementation of our policies. As community leaders, it is our responsibility to educate our parents on the long-term debilitating effect of chronic absenteeism, especially in the primary grades, and anyone who's looked at those numbers know that chronic absenteeism in the primary grades usually leads nowhere good, and we must get that word out, and we must work with our parents. There are many, many reasons for this. They're complicated, they're difficult, they seem intractable, but we will get after it, and we will get on them. We'll also work with the Council, the Mayor, and our legislative delegation, and other stakeholders to develop a comprehensive plan that identifies and attacks the many root causes of this problem, because it's not just an educational problem. It stems, it begins long before the school day starts, and it ends long after the school day ends. Perfect attendance is not a high-in-the-sky thing. It is the best way by which our kids can close the achievement gap. If we intend to close the achievement gap, we must get our average daily attendance above the statewide average. We cannot hope to make up ground when our kids are in school less than their peers in other cities and towns, so that has to be a top priority. I want to just talk for a moment about what I think there's some uncertainty. This is a time of transition, and there is uncertainty. I've even been told of rumors that run at 960 Main Street of a coming house cleaning. Change is inevitable. There'll be new faces that come, there'll be old faces that go, but I'll say this, and I'll say this openly, and I think anyone who knows me knows that I shoot straight. There's no purge, there's no political hit list, there's no list of protected favorites. The next Superintendent will have a free hand to assemble his or her team, just like Dr. Kishimoto and just like Dr. Adamowski. Qualifications, demonstrated ability, and proven performance will be the standards, not connections or the lack of connections. We know that we are blessed with many hard-working, dedicated, capable, and sometimes even brilliant employees at all the levels of our system and throughout our many schools, and we're thankful for all of you. We ask only that you give it 110% each day, progress your work successfully, and think about and care about our kids as if they were your own. If you do that, you have nothing to fear in a new Superintendent, or a new Chairman, or a new Board. I'd like to conclude. I know that sometimes I say things that are hard. I'm sorry if they wound people, because that is not my intent. I say that because we can't become complacent, and I fear sometimes we do. We worked very hard, and we've done some truly extraordinary things in this city in the last 10 years. And given the number, and the complexity, and the difficulty of the problems which remain, I think it's only natural that we retreat into our success, and we use it as a shield against the hard reality of all the work that still has to be done. I think it becomes very easy to delude ourselves into thinking that the race is all about I think it becomes very easy to delude ourselves into thinking that the race is all but won, and to congratulate ourselves on the victory. But we can't delude ourselves, not even for one minute. For all the work we've done, many struggles still lie ahead. For all the problems that we've overcome, twice as many remain. Until the race has actually been won, we cannot stop running, and we certainly can't begin to celebrate. But just as we cannot fall prey to delusion, neither can we fall prey to despair. After a decade of hard work and billions of dollars spent, we're only about one-third of the way toward closing the achievement gap. We may not even be that far, because many of the problems which remain seem harder and more intractable than the problems we've solved. Under such circumstances, I think it's easy to lose heart, and to become cynical, and to lose hope. In a moment of weakness, everyone asks, "How much more can I do? How much more can anyone expect?" The answer is more. I came to Hartford almost 20 years ago to this very day. When I arrived, the state of our schools was a disgrace, and not long after I arrived, they were taken over by the state. Now, however, there are things we can be proud of, many of them, and there are good reasons we can be hopeful. We must draw strength and inspiration and courage from all the good things we've already done to fortify ourselves for what lies ahead on the rocky road we're on. It won't be easy, but we can walk the path. So let us move forward on this path, because the roads that look easier lead us nowhere. Public officials typically make sweeping promises and offer bold predictions when they come into office, so I'll make mine. I promise you blood, toil, tears, and sweat. I predict there will be bitter disappointment, numerous failures, and there will be many moments when every one of us, me included, will want to run away and quit. I would be lying to you if I said otherwise. But I also promise you that we have the courage and we have the skill we need to carry our work through to the end. I promise you that if we persevere, there will be victories that wash away the bitter defeat. I assure you that at the end of the long and rocky road, there lies a place of promise and plenty, and I predict that if we do persevere, we and our children, we will find that place. Thank you. I've talked quite enough for one day. Dr. Kishimoto.